P M on Monday, February seventeenth, the year two thousand twenty-five. We have some consent agenda items. Are there anything that you would like to pull out and address individually, or should we go ahead and do this as a, as a group? Anybody have anything they want to pull out? If not, we have the minutes of the February third, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting and February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five school board special meeting, closed session. We have general fund vouchers and purchasing card transactions requesting approval of general fund vouchers one eight three one seven five through one eight three three zero one and two nine three one eight three through two nine three two one zero and purchasing card transactions dated twelve twenty-one twenty-four through one twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Okay, wait down one second. Tom, do I have a second?
I can second.
Megan. Cindy. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. There are some personnel items and professional staffing items that is no, not necessary for vote, so we will move on to public comments. Angie, do we have any public comments this evening?
We have not had anyone register for public comments.
Okay, then, in that case, we will move on to high school student report. Take it away.
Hello, thank you so much for being, for us being here tonight. I will be sharing the, I'm sorry.
No, you're hilarious.
Thank you.
I will be sharing the student's school board, uh, report.
Where'd you go?
Sorry. And there we are.
All right.
Okay, uh, is it? I hope it can be seen.
Yep.
Okay. So, this is for the week of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, our highlights. So what's going on at MHS this week? We hosted Community Week at MHS the week of February tenth to thirteenth. We celebrated Community Week, expressing our empathy and kindness throughout different activities. Each day was hosted by a different club. For Monday, it was Student Council, as students dressed out in full Spartan gear. For Tuesday, we had Letters of Love, one of the newer clubs who featured in pink out. For Wednesday, we had Hope Squad who sported a comfier wear. And on Thursday, we as Connect hosted it with Twin Day where we judged various friends dressed up in twin outfits. Still have no response on who won, but we will have that out probably this week. On February eighth, the science bowl team traveled to the Milwaukee School of Engineering to participate in the annual regional science bowl competition. They represented MHS and had an amazing time. On Tuesday, February eleventh, was Women in STEM Day, and members from Girl Lab traveled to Wabisa and taught third and fifth grade students about the day and its importance to do, to do science and had a science experiment. Uh, multicultural club has been working with the public library, uh, to have a lot of, highlighting a lot of cultures there and, uh, hosting a lot of various activities. Coming up, what will be going up at MHS? On February nineteenth, the jazz, the Jazz Ensemble Concert will be hosted at seven thirty P M in the PAC. And February twenty-second, String Fling will be hosted at IMS where the fifth graders, middle schoolers, and high schoolers will all perform together in the gym. We didn't have anything on the Youth Unity Summit, but that is coming up, I'm pretty sure around this week or next week. I was not very aware of this. And we have our athletic updates. Girls' basketball had two competition games against Badgers Small Conference in Rees-Burick and Sutton this week. Boys' basketball won against St. Forest on Saturday. Boys' hockey had a good week against Whitefish Bay, Co-op, and Madison Memorial, and will start their WIAA tournament, uh, this Thursday hosting Sutton. Girls' hockey had a really busy week with a bunch of competitive games against Beaverdam and Stevens Point. They will start also their WIAA tournament with the week against Baraboo on Thursday. For boys' wrestling, congratulations on taking first place in the WIAA Regional Wrestling Tournament. They will compete in sectionals on Tuesday at Milton, at Miltonson. Congratulations also to girls' wrestling, to Emily Cor, to Emily Corals for taking second place at the WIAA Regional Wrestling Tournament. She will compete again on Friday at Prairie Du Chan at the sectional meet. And, uh, congratulations as well to our boys' swimming, who ended up taking first place at the WIAA sectional swim meet. All of these participants, uh, will compete at WIAA state meet this Friday with Keisha South High School. And that should be it. Thank you so much.
Just a full schedule for the kids.
It's very exciting about wrestling, that's the best that they have done. That's the highest they've ever finished.
I think they've progressed pretty much year by year. And the swimmers, unless I read it wrong, I think they won every event except one.
He said a record for the.
Something like that.
I think you're right, it was pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's incredible.
If nobody's got anything else, we'll just thank you and look forward to seeing you again in a couple of weeks, okay?
Yes, thank you so much, have a wonderful night.
You too.
Thank you. District administrators report.
Well, I think we're.
No, school, no, I went too far, too fast there. Informational items. Oh, yeah, I'm glad we got this. Mr. Tarnitzer.
Well, it is Adult Crossing Guard Recognition Week, so we are recognizing our crossing guards as we should on every week, but especially this week because the State Superintendent has declared it such, and it's freezing cold.
Yeah.
So Chief Edmund and I were out there this morning thanking them, and thank you, Tom, who serves as an alternate as a crossing guard. I hope you got your little gift left at your spot. Okay, good. So I will read this and then we can share our own thoughts about our school crossing guards. So Dr. Underly, our State Superintendent, has declared this Adult Crossing Guard Recognition Week, whereas Wisconsin's adult crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school, and whereas adult school crossing guards serve with a dedication that overcomes the rigors of split shifts, heavy traffic, and they stand strong, enduring in the face of swelter, sweltering heat, bitter cold, blowing snow, and heavy rainfall, and whereas adult school crossing guards have for more than five decades served Wisconsin communities to make them more secure, providing a safe path to learning for children, and whereas adult school crossing guards are often the first to greet our students and the last to say goodnight, they do this all with a mission focused on helping students safely navigate city streets, county roads, and highways, and whereas adult school crossing guards help reinforce safety in the minds of young people, they highlight the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior, and therefore, be it resolved, that I, Dr. Jill Underly, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, declare the week of February seventeenth through twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week, a time to recognize and thank the many adult crossing guards whose commitment make a difference in the lives of children in Wisconsin schools. So special thanks to our, our ten crossing guards who are out there, day in, day out, and they do all of those things that Dr. Underly mentioned, and I think they also keep a lot of things moving along traffic-wise, even when kids aren't there, in addition to keeping our kids safe. So we're able to chat with them this morning, the ones that were out, and we'll pick up some more tomorrow, but one of the things that they, they mentioned was how much it means to them when, you know, a community member gives them a wave or a thank you, that, that's not why they do it, but they sure do feel appreciated. And they also commented about how safe our kids are and how polite that our kids are. So, you know, when people talk about kids these days, those are our kids. So anything the board would like to add?
I'd also like to add, or as, they put up with the rude drivers.
Yes.
Fortunately, fortunately, we don't have too many here. I mean, it's really an exceptional situation, and I also had noted here before you mentioned it, how polite the kids are. Doesn't matter if they're in kindergarten or twelfth grade, but most often, after the crossing guard crosses them, they always thank them for, for, for keeping them safe and for what they're doing. So, and it's really an exceptional group of people. They are dedicated, as Erin said, they're out there regardless of the weather. I think at McFarlane, we're very fortunate, because in a lot of districts, they can't find enough crossing guards, but the environment is right here. It's a great fit to have, I wouldn't say an overabundance of crossing guards, but certainly we are well-staffed.
Yes. Yep, and they stay, they keep coming back.
I know, we do our share of just a little kind of road trips around the area during the days, and we've, we've managed to find ourselves in the middle of a couple of school districts at pickup time, and it's no better there than it is here. It's just that those two, the drop-offs and pickup, it's just, it's gonna be kind of a mess, it seems like. I've never really, and, and if you think it's a mess now, you should have gotten a look at it, I don't know how many years ago, but Jeff could tell us that we switched everything around, even the direction of the street. Because we had so many close calls up there. But in terms of our crossing guards, they're remarkable. I mean, that's, that's not easy. I mean, they, they get up early in the morning and it really doesn't much matter what the weather's like, and they do their job and get home and have to go out and do it again later on.
Yeah.
That's, that's difficult, and I hope they, they know how much they're appreciated.
Exactly. And from my observation, Craig, as far as the messiness during rush hour pickup and drop-off, it's so much better now than ever before, because we have the scattered start-finish times.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's made the big difference.
Sorry, that was mentioned several times today by the guards, how much that staggered start and end time has made a difference for, for students' safety.
That was a great change.
Yep.
It was.
They make it look easy, that's for sure.
It takes a special kind of boy or girl to do that, and you gotta love the kids. And I would, I would say that they all probably do, otherwise they wouldn't be out there doing it when it's seven below, you know, wind chill.
I can clearly state, they all love kids. And they take care of all the kids as if they're their own children or grandchildren.
Yep.
Crossing the street. Again, we're very fortunate on the high quality of crossing guards that we have here.
Anything else? If not, school safety written drill evaluation notification and review per Wisconsin State Statute one one eight dot zero seven four C P. Mr. Tarnitzer.
You can see an administrative hold at Wabisa that was held for a student that was in distress, and appreciate the initiative of the staff involved protecting the privacy of our students, so that they can get the care that they need in a, in a, in a safe and private manner, so thanks to their quick response and follow-up.
It's a mighty light report.
Yeah.
I appreciate the, what do they call it? The, the takeaways?
Lessons learned.
Lesson, lessons learned, yeah, because I find that very useful, to see, okay, what's gonna happen next time, and they, they've already charted that out.
Yep, there's a lot of things to think about when these situations happen, primarily, as you can see in this one, is where the student was when it happened, and who can see, you know, and the incident with windows and things, so you always gotta think ahead, and it takes a couple people to walk ahead and make sure that, that we're protecting the privacy.
District administrators report.
All right, whew, you guys are getting enough of me. So some things going on, first of all, this is very interesting, our very own Brian Ward played a role on a educator review committee for the Department of Public Instruction, and he was a key member in helping them draft a district self-evaluation tool on American Indian Studies. So you may know there's something called Act Thirty-One, it's been, been state statute for a long time about, uh, teaching about, uh, American Indian Studies throughout the curriculum, as you're required to do by law, and, and so he and some other educators helped create this tool so that districts can make sure they're in compliance with that statute, so special thanks to Brian.
That's great.
For his leadership. Um, you heard, had the orchestra concert, that was actually here when we were here last, that was going on, so obviously we weren't able to attend. Appreciate second grade team, I, I don't know how it went, but I assume it went great, led some field work with the UW Geology Museum for our second graders. Middle school had the Student of the Month Assembly since we met last. Melissa and I have been doing state interviews with our staff members who are early in their career here, typically in their second year, so this is the second year that we've done those interviews. So we meet individually with, with new staff and talk about their experience, what's going well, what would keep you here forever, is, is what we want to know, how can we improve? And they've been really good, I think we each have just a handful more, and then we'll share out the themes of that with all of you, and I've already seen some, some great ideas that they've had, that we can make some changes, just to make things a little bit better.
State interviews, is that what you call them?
Yep. Yep, so it's, instead of doing exit interviews, they're stay interviews, and we also do exit interviews.
I understand.
That's an autopsy, and so this, this helps us know in, in the moment, what's working, what's not working, and I will tell you, some of the things that, that come up are just so reinforcing that the things that we're trying to do are making a difference for our staff, so, but that's just a teaser to what you'll be hearing.
Erin, how long have we been doing state interviews?
This is just the second year.
Okay, so, so you brought this with you, good.
Yep, yep, it's something Melissa and I talked about, my first year here, I realized that we weren't consistent in our exit interview process. I thought all of the buildings were doing what I did as a principal, and I found out that there really hadn't been a consistent approach to those. So as an administrative team, we developed a consistent process for that, that typically involves a series of questions asked during a one-to-one meeting by the, the immediate supervisor, but staff can request to have a meeting with the, their supervisor's supervisor if they don't feel comfortable meeting with their direct supervisor, as well as the survey that they fill out anonymously, that's sent by school perceptions. So this was a, a new process to try and address our strategic plan focused on staff retention.
Thanks for doing that.
It's, it's wonderful, it's really a great process. Other things going on, since we met last, we had the high school advising night, which I know Tom was here. It was an amazing event, the colleges, employers, the clubs that were here, all of the, the teachers that were here to talk about their departments, the presentations that were done. Penny Thompson and Beth Canfield were kind of the two main leaders, but so many people involved in planning it, and it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger every year, and, and families, really well attended, and a lot of great, great ideas and the great things shared, so.
Is there any way that, that we could possibly track, you know, if, if your initial contact was made during, you know, this night, and it actually worked its way through and it ended up, you know, with somebody taking, getting a position based on their initial contact with the folks here at, at the advising night?
I think we could, I mean, you'd have to just check back in with the employers, I think, um, you know, require some self-reporting.
I, I have no doubt it, it's very successful. I don't, I don't know that there's any in the area that can hold us to anything less than one of the best.
And I think you're in the sessions that were conducted during the evening? Exemplary. It's truly amazing that the staff were able to pull together to do the outreach to different families and what kids need, and really individualizing components of, of that.
Yes, things like youth apprenticeship, and, and there's a, a session for freshmen and, you know, just a variety of things, and applying for colleges and.
Scholarships.
Scholarships, yep. So, great night, and, and it's a good way to replace some of what was previously, they'd have these conference nights, which are sporadically attended, and so this really engages everyone, so it's a full parking lot, that's for sure. We've had the facilities naming committee has now had three of their scheduled four meetings, we're hoping to be on track to come and present to the board on March third, it may get delayed depending upon the outcome of our next meeting, which is on the twenty-sixth. So a lot of research has been done on Conrad Alviam, and the group is taking it very seriously, very engaged, real fortunate to have a group of community members that are participating in that.
We've had good, consistent attendance
Yes.
To all three?
Yep, things come up.
Oh, yeah.
You know, sometimes somebody can't come to one, but they can come to another, and, but, but people remain engaged, so that's been good. You heard about Community Week and just want to thank everybody, it's kind of a school-wide or district-wide event, and a nice way to kind of address what is, in, in my experience, the most difficult time of the school year, is this mid-February time is tough, at least it's tough.
Tough time in life.
It is rough. Thank you to the board for your feedback on my performance and, and help with the goal setting, I'm working on establishing those SMART goals to give back to you, but really appreciate your, your guidance last week. We also wanted to, we acknowledged all of the, the athletic competitions at this end of the season, so if you're able to get to, to any of those events, whether it's, you know, we've got some postseason things going on with hockey and wrestling and swimming, so very exciting, looking forward to that drum line on, uh, for Friday for state. Other things, I'm gonna jump to coming up and then I'll come back to the, to the photos. The reminder, it's Black History Month, it's Kindness Month, it's CTE, Career and Technical Education Month, and today is President's Day, by the way, and coming up, we have George Washington's birthday. We also have, tomorrow's a primary election for state superintendent, obviously something affecting education, and we have the IMS and MHS Jazz Ensemble Concert this Wednesday. That is one of my favorite concerts of the, no offense to the others, but, um, my wife really dislikes jazz and I really like jazz, so, that's a good one, free tickets, free tickets, you don't need to get them in advance. Conrad Alviam Primary School has their open house coming up this week on Thursday from four to five thirty. We've already got incoming kindergarten orientation starting on Friday.
That's wild.
Yeah, I know. The String Fling you heard about at the middle school this weekend, and George Washington's birthday, the Unity Summit is the twenty-fifth, so that is next week, and we'll have about a hundred to a hundred and fifty students from around the area participating in that, so that will be wonderful. Another kindergarten orientation next week, we have our last, possibly, Citizens Facility Naming Committee, the middle school fun night is next Thursday night, so a week from this Thursday, the following Thursday night, so if you're able to check that out, please do. I will be unable to attend as I'm gonna be out of town. And then coming up on the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth is Ramadan. Next month is Women's History Month, Youth Art Month, and we're back here on the third, which is also IMS Inclusion Week and School Social Workers Week and National School Breakfast Week, as well as there's, that night that we have the board meeting, just before the board meeting will be the Parent Guardian Learning Night at, for K five, it's gonna be held at Wabisa. So several sessions for that, that will be exciting to have that for the first time. And in terms of photos around the area, you can see, here we are, students, you know, doing some math car games right there in, in second grade. I just love, not only that they have these creative ways to engage students in math, but how much fun that they're having. You can just see that, and I just really appreciate that. Here we were with, we had the Police Department and Fire and Rescue Department joining students for breakfast with badges, such a great title, isn't it?
Yeah.
And you can see how much fun they're all having together, what a great event, and if you haven't seen breakfast at C E P S, you should check it out, it is, they are serious about their breakfast, they have a great time, and really appreciate our, our local first responders there. We also have Mrs. Worley's, their third grade class, doing some literacy work, doing a little, kind of, argue, argument, supporting their claim, a little debate about a, a book characters, and such a great thing to teach students how to, to make a claim and support it with evidence. I appreciate that. You can see here, this fourth grade class is doing an activity, looks like we're playing the old game of telephone there, exploring sound and how sound travels, so, some science there in fourth grade. So again, that hands-on learning, right, very important. This was just a fun related arts at, at Wabisa, did a fun little competition where wrapping people up as mummies and the strategy, doing some problem solving, some group problem solving, how to do it the fastest, you can see that, having fun and problem solving together. So a real theme in the pictures tonight, about kind of creative problem solving and collaboration. It was World Read Aloud Day at the middle school, so I know some of you were able to go and read, really great event to celebrating the power of reading aloud, and you never get too old to have something read to you, and just a, a cool event, you can see even a student there, a couple students there doing some reading. Because we try to invite community members as well to come and share. We had the Science Bowl, the Annual Science Bowl, and a couple of middle school teams competing in that, always a great event, a special thanks to Mrs. Donigan for her leadership in that and organizing those teams, and I'm not sure how they did, but we have had historically quite a bit of success. It is pretty intense, that Science Bowl, if you've never seen it, it's, woo, there's some amazing students. Excited to celebrate the impact. Excited to celebrate the impact that the high school Spartan Reset has had on the number of tardies. You can see that dramatic reduction in, in tardies and also a reduction in behavior referrals. So, and that's all done through these student check-in meetings. So part of it's just monitoring kids.
Yeah.
And, you know, and saying, okay, something seems to not be working. What can we do? And, and a level accountability without, you know, being too threatening because it starts with that meeting. And sometimes that's all it, all it takes. So that's a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Starts with the consistency and teachers taking attendance. So thanks. Also, at the, if you have a chance to stop into the public library, there's a display by the Multicultural Club here. Displaying some different cultural heritages. Note too, a reminder, next month, Youth, Youth Art Month, you'll have to stop at that event. Where they're going to have, music is coming back for that event as well. It's CTE Month, and you can see Decan Skills USA, these student organizations just continue to thrive and to grow. So it's really proud of that. Thank you to the advisors for their leadership. And it was School Counselors Week. We have such wonderful school counselors. They do so much for, yes, our students, yes, our families, but also our staff. And, and so really lucky to have them and their leadership was just meeting with some, in fact, today on crisis communications. So they are involved in so many things, and we have such a talented group, including some somewhat new faces to us in recent years. Of course, Love the Bus Month, you know, last week, we really wanted to emphasize our amazing bus service, and it certainly was good weather to do that. And then this week was School Crossing Guard Week. Pick the right weeks with all the snow, the never-ending snow last week. And we are so fortunate to have a great bus crew that travel from far and wide to serve our kids. That concludes my report. What do you all have to share in recognitions?
No one in particular, Erin, but just some of the information that you shared tonight, information that I think we all are aware of. It really is a great place for kids. Because we have heavy family involvement. We have a lot of outreach from staff to home and vice versa. I think the staff is very exceptional. You have to go above and beyond what's expected. And I think that results in the reputation that we have and, and, and the character of our district. So again, and you've, you've heard me say this before, as a board member, I'm very proud of serving on the board to sort of represent all the stakeholders here in the district.
Well said. And sometimes wonder, you know, as we go through these lists, and I was, I was kind of feeling the same way. We're doing a lot of things with all the family fun nights and the events. At some point, we probably need to stop adding stuff. You know, and just do what we're doing and do it better, maybe, standard operating procedure. Because we're doing so many. The string fling this weekend, and oh, it's a lot.
It is a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a credit to all the advisors and all the, you know, departmental leaders and things. Because you're right. I mean, and to adequately staff all of those events is pretty remarkable also.
Yeah.
So, you know, credit to them, credit to the, to the folks that do things just because they love kids. And I, I just know that most of us do.
Most of the.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll move to the business managers' report. Mr. Mahoney, we have a budget update and multi-year estimation projection.
Hello, can you hear me this evening?
Yes, yes, loud and clear.
Thanks for letting me be remote this evening. All right, Angie's gonna get this started. And, you know, it's always fun when we can go past a introduction slide and say, we're already one slide into this presentation, so. So what are we working on these days? Resident enrollment estimates, you know, we brought that forward in November, December to A-Council and the board. And then, you know, we always continue to monitor what's going on with that. But that allowed us to then provide estimates for open enrollment. And, you know, the board set our policy for our open enrollment. February that we're presently in, going through the end of April, where we'll know a little bit more about open enrollment. I have another slide on open enrollment coming up. Staffing changes. February is when staff notify us about many things, including retirements and if there's any planned Do I need to change up anything, Angie, on my audio?
Can you turn off your screen?
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So again, we have a couple retirements from the professional staff, and we have a planned resignation for family reasons. So three professional staff we will be working with for next year. So no cuts necessary, which is always a wonderful thing to be going into another school year on. And then we're always working on revenue estimates and expense estimates. Next slide, Angie. Well, we've showed this picture before, and it still holds true. Our resident enrollment is continuing to decrease, and every student is worth a certain number of dollars, so our budget really focuses on that. Next slide. So open enrollment, it's definitely could be an impact for 25, 26. We did have ninety-six openings for fourth grade through fifth grade. So far, only twenty-five percent of the slots have applications. And again, parents can choose to three districts to send their children to. They have until April 30th to do the application. They have until the end of June to say if they're gonna, which district they're gonna commit to out of those two or three that they've selected. And then they still have the opportunity to decide not to show up when we start school. So I, I say that with just the caveat that, you know, there's a lot of districts, every district in Dade County that has space. And every applicant that we are seeing is listing at least two to three districts. And again, very geographic, as you know, open enrollment's very geographic for transportation. Therefore, a lot of our applicants include a list, Oregon, Manona, us, over Manona, us, in, so. Just some data. This is our current grade level sections that are in the kindergarten through fifth grade. We have currently, out of those six grade levels, we have four seven sections and two eight sections. That's why I referred to previous slide. We do have some, a staff member that is resigning due to family reasons. That is in our K-5 area, and we also have a retirement in our K-5 area. So then we have a few people coming back from some family-related reason from the previous year. So again, right now, we're, we're balanced well. If for some reason we did not have a, a spike in enrollment or additional open enrollment, we're still hoping that we receive. That would help us financially. Next slide, please. So just like I do most years, I just kind of give a big overview of where our revenue situation is at. We are entering our second of three years of our referendum, of which we have 1.75 million that is available for the board to add to its revenue cap if necessary, at this point would be. That's next year. We are in the middle of watching the state go through their two-year biennial budget process. Currently, there is in the long, this coming two-year period of time and longer, there was kind of a 400-year plan put in place by a line item or veto by the governor of making sure that districts always have a $325 per student adjustment in the revenue cap. Just wanted to share, what does that mean to the McConville School District? That's about a 2.7% increase. So that is necessary along with our referendum as well to get close to having a balanced budget. There continues to be whispers of changes to specialized funding to bring it up to meet the rising costs there. Declining enrollment exemption. Just a reminder that we had significant declining enrollment between 23, 24 and 24, 25, which was slightly unexpected in our residential base, and that caused us to have about $309,000 of loss in the revenue cap. However, for the first year of that loss, the state allows you to have an exemption from that law, new cap. So next year, 25, 26, that is for part of our starting point. Open enrollment, we chatted about a little bit. Twenty-five percent of the slots have been registered for so far, but again, we have families that are choosing to select multiple districts, not just us. So we'll continue to watch that. And then kind of a area that we spent a little bit of time on during our referendum and this, this past fall was, you know, a couple of big variable revenues in our system for us, interest earnings, of which, as we had planned, we'll be using fund balance. So our interest earnings, while we have great rates right now, we're going to be bringing our balance down even this year and approaching of next year. So we can't rely on making too many aggressive decisions on interest earnings. WEVA, I think we could probably start to maybe consider seeing maybe we've been sitting at 1.4 million, we're probably at the ability of going to like 1.5 million because we've had some consistency of over 1.5 million the last couple of years. So we'll continue to monitor that with knowing exactly where that is in June. We finalize the FD that has attended WEVA this entire year. Next. Expense. What we had kind of planned out and put forward to the community for our referendum for 25, 26, 26, 27, and even this past year, was planning for about four and a half percent in wage changes. This is about a market-based process that we try to work through. However, it kind of depends on sometimes what happens during this biennial budget process. If it slows us or gets sped up at all. Comparative info will be coming to our district next week. We participate in a large survey system that we're able to see how we do comparatively in not only support staff, professional staff, but administrative staff. To note, for districts that do have currently registered unions with the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission, they will have a bargaining maximum of 2.95%. Health is our single most highest expense after salaries and wages. And in this budget, we are looking at 11%. And we are currently doing bidding options. We have a subcommittee that's been working on this. Kind of some good news as of last week is our MLR, which is our medical loss ratio. Instead of a MLS, medical loss savings, is that the other way of looking at it? We've been running pretty high with that the last couple of years, which means for every, in the instance of 23, 24 school year or fiscal year for our benefits, for every dollar we put into our insurance premiums, both employee and employer, we were spending 47 cents more on our costs. So our insurance companies, excuse me, our insurance company dean, the health plan, was losing, you know, 40 cents on the dollar for insuring our plan. So the good news is we're running closer to just about 100% right now for the first quarter of the 24, 25 fiscal year. So we do have some positives and some good information that's going out to the bidders. Transportation, certainly something that always is expensive in our budget, is always something that we review at this time of year to see what things we can do to make things more efficient, and we'll continue to look at that. Insurance, property and casualty, you can imagine, you know, just watching the news the last two months. Insurance companies insure a lot of places throughout the United States. So California wildfires, the South flooding, it does cause an impact on areas that are not in those locations. So we are bidding and negotiating some of our property and casualty lines of insurance just to see if there are other companies that we might be able to go more regional with, that can provide us a little bit more consistency and not have estimated higher increases. So those are kind of the four main areas that we at this time of year to see if we can make impacts for next year and future years. Next slide, please. All right. Not only 25, 26 planning, but beyond that, we're trending similarly for what we had projected in 24, 25 for our referendum. But 26, 27 has a bit more of a deficit than we had planned just because of our declining in residential enrollment. That is a little bit more than we are expecting. As a note, we know that our referendum ends in 26, 27. So it is important that our decisions in 25, 26 and 26, 27 are critical for the post-referendum timeframe. Again, in concert, we'll be watching what's going on with the state of Wisconsin's biennial budget. Next slide, please. Next steps, continue to review revenue and expenses. We have our salary study information that's coming back in February, March. We're working on our health insurance. We monitor the state. We continue to not only monitor our enrollment, particularly open enrollment, but we also will be reporting out at the building level starting actually next week to talk about where we feel enrollment will be and what that impact might be on the building. So that is an ongoing process. It has me getting out to some building leadership teams, particularly at the CEPS and Wabisa. And then beyond 25, 26, we have to continue to evaluate as we always do. How can we be better with the resources that are given to us so that we can make sure we're covering the expenses that we need? So I went through a lot. You certainly can bounce back to topics you want to discuss, or you can always email me as usual, or call.
Are all or at least most of the surrounding districts also struggling with declining enrollment?
Yes.
Jeff, you talked about, you heard whispers.
About special ed funding changes possibly? What can you tell us about those whispers? What have, what has been the content?
I'll turn my volume down a little bit so I don't get the feedback loop. So, probably a little bit more than whispers, we've been all advocating to have more funding, it's a priority from all of our state organizations. So for instance, if we doubled our reimbursement rate from the state, that'd mean another $2 million. So that would be significant, that would help us balance out a budget, it would allow us to put more resources in place and do the things that we're already doing better.
So, if there's a lot of advocacy, do you, have you heard anything about how likely it is that that will get passed into the next level?
Well, as I've done in the last 27 years, until joint finance starts to have their hearings and deliberate, I don't go too far with our estimates with our budget. And just gotta be very cautious with where joint finance lines up with this.
Related to open enrollment, I just, I wonder if we could have an update both in March and then again after the deadline, and we might already be planning for this, but for what the final open enrollment application numbers are?
Certainly, we've usually had a report that's at least given, you know, how many applied. And then usually in July or August, we'll actually indicate how many have committed. But, you know, again, that key date is the third Friday of September, but we'll continue to have the information come forward.
And then one other question I had about the other, well, about the 4.95, 4.4, I don't know, increase in salaries that we budgeted for?
Yes.
How many other surrounding districts have certified unions in place where they would be tied to that 2.95?
Well, many are tied to it because they're certified, however, they work around the law by putting in supplemental increases. So Dane County is a, a just, a county that constantly works around that CPI limit.
That asked that 4.5% was the estimate to keep us below average in terms of salary?
That sounds so funny.
Yeah.
To keep us below average.
Well, that's what I was hoping, that maybe that cert, that lower number might help bump us above, below average. Sounds like no. Okay.
I appreciate the information, Jeff.
As always, thanks very much, Jeff. First action is action on offer to purchase property by Village of McFarland, part of Lot One, Dane County, CSM 15364.
I move to accept the offer to purchase part of Lot One, Dane County, CWSM number 15362 by the Village of McFarland as outlined in the attached school district land offer to purchase.
Thank you, Megan, do I have a second?
I can second that.
Can I just check on the number?
Yes.
Because I see two different, one says 15364.
It sure does.
And then it says 15362. So what does the actual document say?
Yeah, I think we just.
Because it could have just been my typo.
I've got 15364.
It isn't a race, we can take our time here. It's 364.
Yeah.
So.
So that's, your motion is correct.
No.
No.
Oh, you, oh, you.
The motion is not correct. So we just have to change the motion, or can we amend it?
Yeah, so where were you, did, was it seconded or were you still making?
I didn't second it.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All right, so, we have to figure out what we're doing.
We can amend.
I believe Megan could make a friendly amendment if the second, Bruce groups.
Yeah.
Or we could vote, we could vote on her motion.
And deny it.
Deny it.
And then make a new motion.
Make another, amend the motion to the right number.
Amendment would be most appropriate?
So.
Go ahead, Megan.
I will make a friendly amendment to the motion on the table to change it to say, I move to accept the offer to purchase part of Lot One, Dane County, CWSM 15364 by the Village of McFarland as outlined in the attached school district land of, land offer to purchase.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
And I will second that amendment.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Action on first reading of policies, 2264, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, and 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, the board's policy and grievance procedures for responding to sexual harassment alleged to have occurred prior to eight on 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the first reading of policy 2264, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, and policy 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Megan Chapman. Discussion? Hearing done.
Can, can I provide a little context?
Yeah.
Just for people to know what has happened, so how did we get here? So in early January, I think it was January 9th, federal court in Kentucky ruled the 2024 Title IX regulations to be no longer valid. They struck them down. And as a result of that, this is nationwide impact, what a result is, we had just changed in August, had just changed to the, to the new regulations. So what this does, what you have, have just done with your first reading is to rescind 2264, which that was the new regulations, and to revise the previous Title IX policy that we had just revised to say, this only applies up until August, and to say, nope, it still applies. So it's, it's as though the 2024 regulations never happened. There are some, some differences between the 2020 regulations and the 2024 regulations. Some of them are sort of technical and what roles different people can, can serve and things. The one that is most often talked about and, and was one of the main reasons it was struck down was that the 2024 regulations did provide specific reference to gender-based discrimination based on gender identity. For this, for, for the state of Wisconsin and other states that reside within the Seventh Circuit, we do have guidance on that, which states that you continue to need to recognize gender identity. So what ends up happening is for those outside of the Seventh Circuit, that they now have a, a pretty significant change in, in their ability to address discrimination based on gender identity. For us, it doesn't change anything because the Seventh Circuit is the federal court that provides our guidance, so. So the, the changes for us as a district are, are really procedural, frankly, and fairly minor.
Okay, that's good.
And I think you had sort of forewarned us before that this might happen, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with the current administration.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Action on McFarland High School early graduation request, I would look for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the attached MHS early graduation request as recommended by administration.
Megan C., do I have a second?
Megan F. will second.
Okay, any discussion?
I like the way this recusa was written up.
They do vary.
They do vary, and my concern last time was that it varied quite a bit, but this is sort of a middle of the road. And I really like what, what this student did and shared.
Yeah, we have, we have definitely solidified that process.
Yeah.
So it'll be more consistent and forward.
The parents also signed off on it.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Action on recommended.
Could we just clarify if the motion was made by Chapman, seconded by Bessler? Just so we have that verbally for the record?
Yep.
Thanks.
Action on recommended Weaver, Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin, Wisconsin Statute 118.408G, student transfers to resident districts. At this time, Weaver, Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin are requesting approval of recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement. Do I have a motion to approve?
I can make that.
Thank you, Bruce. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion?
Yes, it's me again. There's only one K through six student that's being withdrawn. So again, it just is a reflection of the efforts that are being made by the Weaver staff to keep these kids fully engaged and tune into what we want them to do. The, the sad note though, is I think I counted nine or 10 seniors.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're so close to reaching that goal line.
Yep.
And now all of a sudden, they're gone.
Yep. That's true.
Sad. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero unanimous. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Megan. Do I have a second?
I can second that.
Thank you, Megan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero and we are at 8:03, we are adjourned.
And again, to confirm that was motion by Chapman, seconded by Bessler to adjourn?
Correct.
Yes.
Can we finish early?
We did.
Three minutes early.